Assalamualaikum amma ba'ad Ba'udzubillahiminasyaitanirrajim Bismillahirrahmanirrahim wa'amur ahlaka bis salati wastabir alaiha la nasalukarizqan naphnu narzuquka wal 'aqibatul ittaqwa Wa yuqulullah tabarakawataala ya ayyuhalladziina amanu qu'anfusakum wa ahlikum naara Fadqallahul 'azim Alhamdulillah All praise belongs to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala Who has given us the opportunity to be here And made us amongst the believers Our Connection to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala it is something That makes us Very important not only As individuals in this world but also important On the day of judgment Tonight's program is shared by myself and our respected Sheikh Idris Masha Allah he has been serving our community for the past eight so months since he's graduated and came back and we are very happy to have him with us When Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala decides to do Khair to a community Allah brings him scholar Right? That's a way that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala blesses a community So Masha Allah we've been blessed by Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala of having Multiple scholars in our community and adding additional scholars And the more the merrier for us Alhamdulillah And we are thankful for all the effort that he is doing in different capacity in our community And As the Prophet SAW said whoever is not able to thank people they cannot thank Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala And especially when the contribution is based on religious aspect For the worldly aspects of it people pay praise each other But for religion why? Because what benefit it is giving to us it is not something that we see in front of our eyes If someone gives you money you see cash coming in Someone gives you a gift you see something coming in But someone gives you a Hadith Someone gives you Ilm Someone shares knowledge Ayat of the Quran Tafsir with you Then you don't see the benefit coming to you in some monetary gain It's all spiritual And spirituality works when you need it the most Right? These things they help you in Aakhirah They help you at the time of need So we are thankful to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala and we are thankful to our respected dear Sheikh Idris For the services that he is providing for the sake of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala you know No scholar Gives a lecture And he can be compensated with any money There is no possibility Because you are confining the unlimited into limited and that is impossible You cannot put a price tag on On these things because the benefit it grows And it flourishes And it goes all the way to the sky So Insha Allah as the lecture has been divided into two categories First is because you have to You have to purify homes to purify hearts Maqan and Makin Allah made the Maqan and then he made the Makin Allah made the universe first and then he made Adam alayhi salam correct? So Maqan and Makin So first We purify the Maqan and then we purify the Makin So I will be Insha Allah sharing with you on aspects of how to purify the Maqan And Sheikh Idris will share with us how to purify the Makin And that is very important because Maqan and Makin it's what Allah has made Allah says all of this around you it's made for you In multiple places Allah mentions this in the Quran and again and again Allah created this for you Allah made this for you Allah made the rain come for you Allah gave you earth to live he gave you animals to take benefit from So these are all gifts of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala similarly Maqan is a gift of Allah Azza wa Jalla And Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala has given Homes To remember Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala Allah says in the Quran make your homes as a Qiblah as a direction During the time of the Prophet SAW When someone would purchase a house the first person he want the house to be introduced to is Nabi alayhi salam So the Sahabi came in he said Ya Rasulullah I have you know build a house I have a house And I want to designate a place in my house for prayer So I want you to come and do the inauguration And then we will appoint that place for prayers So the Prophet SAW went to his house He made Wudhu there And he prayed to Raka'ah Salaah He made Dua for his son So these practices we find in the teachings of Nabi SAW Now how to prepare our homes for Ramadan That is very essential Because Makin needs a Maqan Person who is living he needs a place to live And if the place of living is not accordance to the person who is living in it Then it will not benefit him It will not benefit him So now it is not about me only It is about my household it's about my environment in the house So the first thing we all need to do is we need to make sure that our homes are clean They're clean They have Taharah A Muslim home is a place where you can pray Salaah anywhere Without any hesitations They need to be clean We cannot stay dirty Muslims they are clean they are organized So Taharah is very important because number one Taharah brings angels into our homes And unfortunately I'm gonna say this but our sisters need to hear this more than the brothers because they stay in the house more than the brothers do Right? And that is the responsibility of a sister of a wife of a mother To take care of the Taharah of the house It is their responsibility that make sure the house stays clean The husband can help in cleaning but that is their domain He can remember don't mistake in me oh the Imam Sab said the wife has to clean so I'm gonna sit and you clean no Imam Sab did not say that Imam Sab said that that she is in charge and you clean Understand? She is in charge of the house She needs to make sure that in the house everything is clean Everything is Taharah everything is up to date And if there is something disturbing That it needs to be addressed That this is disturbing we need to take care of this If she sees that someone is not taking care of certain things in the house she is going to address it That you're not doing this right You leave the bathroom dirty after you come out you don't wipe the water when you make Wudhu And you need to accept it The next time I will do it Who are you to tell me? No That's her domain this is her place She's in charge she needs to make sure that everything is clean and whoever is making it dirty it's not that she needs to clean everything Everybody needs to help out this is what makes a home Nabi alayhi salatu was salaam what he used to do in the house Urwah bin Zubair asked A'ishah radhiyallahu anha that how was the Prophet SAW in his house? He used to work for his family He used to knead the dough He used to fix his own shoelaces He used to clean his own dishes These are all work that the greatest human being on earth has done it The greatest human being so now Ramadan is coming up And instead of putting all the load on them Like I need to have you know chart and pakora and babosa and this and that and this and iftar Let's see you make some stuff Be a contributor So that's what we need to do in the house the first thing is Taharah of the house Taharah brings angels It brings angels into the house Nabi SAW Once he was coming into the house and he stopped outside and did not go in Because there was something filthy there was a dog or a cat that came and they relieved themselves in the house of Nabi alayhi salam And the wife of the Prophet SAW did not realize that this has happened And the Prophet SAW said there is some Najasa in the house and the wife went and cleaned it up immediately and then the Prophet SAW entered in So Najasa needs to stay away You have little kids in the house they might be urinating somewhere clean it up Do not let it sit there Because it's going to make that house dirty And in a dirty house angels don't come in and it's unhealthy also You're not just damaging your spirituality but you're damaging your physical your physical aspects of life So before Ramadan happens before we get to Ramadan let's start with Taharah in our homes And let's make sure that we don't have filthy things around or filthy stuff if there is something that needs to be cleaned up that needs to be cleaned up it should be cleaned up And maintain that maintain that because it's very important You know sometimes you go into some people's home It's just that you can't sit You can't bear it There is foul smell There is things in the house And Taharah of two types sometimes people have all these different types of you know things in the house hanging around here and there That takes away the Barakah from the home the home needs to be simple And if you need to decorate it you need to decorate it with the Thikr of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala You need to decorate it with the Remembrance of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala So this is where we start from we start from Taharah purifying the home environment making sure that everything is clean As we approach to the month of Ramadan Number two establishing a spiritual routine in the house We have a routine in the house Talking about Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala And Talking about the Deen of Allah Azza wa Jalla Keeping it intact okay we're going to pray our Salaah let's pray our Salaah together let's pray Tahajjud together Nabi alayhi salatu was salaam He used to wake his family members up for Tahajjud Allah says Command your family to establish prayer and you also establish it So first you start praying and then you invite others to pray With this Barakah will come in the house And when there is an environment everybody becomes it becomes easy for you to practice Because environment brings people together Allah Azza wa Jalla loves that house He loves that home in which there is everybody doing the Thikr of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala or involved in the Ibadah of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala This home it shines upon the people of the sky like the star shines upon the people of earth So we want our homes to be shining in front of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala It's not just to go and you know start you start decorative lights order from Amazon you start putting around your house Okay that's how I'm preparing for Ramadan so my house is gonna shine no You can do that that's fine But the real shine comes from our spirituality There has to be that Noor There has to be that Barakah When someone comes into my house he feels that When you go when the Sahaba used to visit each other when Nabi alayhi salam would go into the house of someone he would feel that spirituality He would check on the Sahaba how much Salaah they're praying there in their houses This is why Rasulullah SAW said Do not make your homes as graveyards Establish them with Thikr Pray optional Salaah in your homes Why? Because this brings Noor The Prophet SAW said The most virtuous obligatory prayer is the one that is prayed in the Masjid And the most virtuous Nafal prayer is the one that is prayed at the home The most virtuous Nafal prayer is the one that is prayed at home And the most virtuous Farid prayer is the one that's prayed in the Masjid So bring a routine establish a spiritual routine and strengthening the bond with the Kitab of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala Because the month of Ramadan is the month of Quran The Sheikh Zakaria writes in his book That I would see in my house That the women folks will start competing with each other how much Ajza they have recited And they would take care of reciting almost 10 Ajza per day while doing house chores While doing their house chores and this is imagine you are listening to the Quran and you are reciting the Quran when you are preparing food in the house And that food when it goes into the stomach of the people that who eat they are only going to do Ibadah of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala That is the best way to nourish your household with the obedience of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala It is to give them food in which there is the Remembrance of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala That Thikr That recitation of Quran While you're cooking and you're reciting the Kalaam of Allah Azza wa Jalla this food is going to have Noor The famous story of Imam al-Shafi'i and Imam Ahmed ibn Humbel When Imam al-Shafi'i visited the house of Imam Ahmed ibn Humbel the mother of Imam Ahmed cooked that food Which Imam al-Shafi'i says that I have never eaten food which is filled with Barakah as your food oh Ahmed Where did that Barakah come from it's the people Our women folks in the house when you start your food cooking preparing your food make Wudhu Pray to Raka'ah And start reciting Quran or the Remembrance of Allah Something is happening on the TV Someone is watching this someone is listening to Atif aslam someone is listening to this or that and that's what's being played in the house And the cooking is happening And the music is being played these are very important things which we don't understand the value of it Abdul Qadir Jilani is such a great saint and a scholar of the past What made him Abdul Qadir Jilani? Because his mother used to make Wudhu and recite Quran while giving him milk while nursing him And that's what made Abdul Qadir Jilani You see that you read about the lives of the mothers of the past How they nourished the home how they took care of their homes So strengthening our bond with the Quran how much Quran you're going to recite? How much Quran you're going to recite? Let's put it together Let's try if we have Hufaz in the house let's try to do Khatam of Quran every week in the month of Ramadan let's distribute it You have five people in the house let's finish five Qurans in the house Everybody takes responsibility of finishing one Quran You know when a Quran is being recited in the house What happens to that house? And when you have multiple people in the house reciting Quran That's why make a routine everybody in the house after Asr we sit down and we recite Or after Fajr we sit down and we recite whatever time is suitable for everyone to sit but fix a time Where everybody sits together and everybody is reciting the Kalaam of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala Wallahi the Noor and Barakah that will come through this practice it's unimaginable You cannot imagine because this is Barakah this is blessing So make a you know connection with the Quran reviving the Sunnah in the house You sit down and you ask Every day we use the bathroom who knows the Dua of the bathroom every day we come out of the bathroom who knows the Dua of coming out of the bathroom When we eat food who knows the Dua after food who knows the Dua who knows the Dua iftar And before iftar if you are breaking your iftar in the house with the family everybody takes it together Abdullah bin Abbas radhiyallahu anhu used to have his entire family sit at the time of iftar and make Dua That is the time where Allah accepts Dua And these schedules they need to be made beforehand And everybody in the house need to know that this is the time for this activity And that's what makes this family be that's what make this family valuable in the side of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala So we talked about four thing and number five is Remove distractions If you have a TV in the house Put a burqa on it cover Kardo This Shaytaan needs to be closed in the month of Ramadan we're not opening this guy Cover it remove distractions Less usage of phone less usage of devices Because distractions takes you away from your Maksad In the month of Ramadan the Maksad is the Rida of Allah Azza wa Jalla and bonding with the Kalaam of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala And if you're coming to the Masjid come collectively Come collectively Because coming to the Masjid collectively doing your Ibadah collectively it has a different impact So these are few things that we can start We can start with purifying our homes Increasing the spirituality of our homes Bonding ourselves with the Kalaam of Allah by scheduling and keeping a time and how much recitation each person does and check on those recitation Establishing Sunnah in the house Establishing the teachings of Rasulullah SAW Optional Sunnah Salaahat from the morning till evening whatever you are able to do And then What was the number fifth? Distraction the most important thing Keeping devices away distractions away And you see how Ramadan can make you know our homes will become the homes of Ramadan Insha Allah This will give such a great strength to our spirituality because A human being established in the house This is very important If you see in the past great people were made in their homes And that's what we need to make great people for future generation by having an environment in the house that brings that makes people Connect to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala We ask the Almighty Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to grant us the understanding We ask Allah Azza wa Jalla to make our homes an ideal homes the ones that are loved by Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala And we ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to grant us the ability to establish good A'maal and the Sunnah of the Prophet SAW in our homes Jazakallah Khair Insha Allah I will request Sheikh Idris to Insha Allah continue from here Jazakallah Khair
Assalamualaikum Rahmatullahi Wabarakatuh We start by making Dua The Dua that the Prophet SAW used to make before Ramadan So we ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to make us from those who witnessed this beautiful month say Ameen We ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to make us from those who are forgiven in this month say Ameen And we ask Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala to make us from those who live to witness many many Ramadans in the years to come say Ameen When you look at Like the top 10 books that are sold on Amazon You'll find that The most famous books are lifestyle books So you have books like for example Atomic Habits You have a book called The Power of Habits is a very good book You have another book called Think More and Grow Rich or something like that by Napoleon Hill There's all these different lifestyle books you have all these lifestyle gurus that claim to say that you know what read my book and I will teach you how to change your life And so some of them will talk about how you need to you know have better discipline Or you need to make better financial decisions or you know in regards to changing your environment changing your circle of people in regards to compromise Many different people in their books will talk about how you need to do certain things to change your life For us as Muslims If you want to change your life It starts by changing your heart It starts by changing your heart Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala says in the Quran in Surah to the Shams A person who wants to succeed in this world and in the hereafter he will only be successful if he purifies his heart And a person who Masha Allah he may have the most discipline in the world or he may make the best financial decisions Or he takes care of his or her mental health or he does this or he does that but he doesn't focus on his heart Khada he has failed Failed completely in this world he won't find Barakah and the hereafter he won't end up in Jannah This is Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala telling us this In another Aya Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala says look this is not just for one person it's not just for the individual but it's for the entire community Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala says Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala will not change the condition of a group of people for the better until they change their hearts So Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala is saying look you want to you know read a book you want to change your lifestyle you I will be the best life guru for you If you want to change your life start by changing your heart The best time to change your heart is none other than The month of Ramadan The month of Ramadan Rasulullah SAW has said a very beautiful Hadith He talks about how Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala in the month of Ramadan has literally created such an opening for us to change our life When the month of Ramadan comes the gates of heaven are open The doors of Jahannam are closed and all those little, little devils, Shayatin, that are running around speaking little waswahs in our, in our minds and telling us to do different things all of those little devils are changed Allah (ﷻ) is opening up an opportunity in another Hadith Rasulullah ﷺ said he said, verily, this month has presented itself towards you there is a night in this month that is better than a thousand months this is a time where you can change your life but then Rasulullah ﷺ said, if you don't whoever is mahroom, whoever is deprived from this month, from the blessings of this month then he is someone who is deprived in every single part of his life Allah (ﷻ) is opening the doors for you and I to change but he's saying that it starts by changing your heart what is the purpose of Ramadan? Allah (ﷻ) says the purpose of Ramadan is to attain Taqwa what does Taqwa mean? we always say Taqwa means fear of Allah but what does it mean to fear Allah (ﷻ)? if you look at the linguistic meaning of Taqwa, Taqwa means to create a shield, a barrier, okay? so Taqwa in essence is creating a barrier between yourself and the anger of Allah (ﷻ) and how do you do this? one time Umar رضي الله عنه, he went up to Ubay bin Ka'ab and he said, "Ya Ubay, I really don't understand the meaning of Taqwa, what does Taqwa mean?" so Ubay bin Ka'ab رضي الله عنه, he said, "Ya Umar, have you ever walked down a path that is filled with thorns, filled with different obstacles?" so Umar رضي الله عنه, he's like, "Yeah, I've done that, I've walked down those paths" right back in those times, they didn't have concrete roads, it was paths and there was stuff on it so there were paths in Medina that were filled with these thorns and so Umar رضي الله عنه said, "Yeah, I've walked down these paths" so Ubay bin Ka'ab رضي الله عنه, he said, "How do you tread these paths? How do you walk?" so Umar رضي الله عنه said, "What I'll do is, I will lift my Izzar, I'll lift my lungi, my garment, and I will tread carefully" "I'll watch my feet and I will make sure my footsteps on an area that doesn't have any thorns" and so Ubay bin Ka'ab رضي الله عنه, he said, "That is Taqwa" you live your life in such a way that you are careful on how you tread whether it's in regards to how we pray our Salaah, how we fast, or it's in regards to our business dealings we are very cognizant of Allah in the, in the, in the fact where every single step that we take in our life we are not heedless of Allah (ﷻ) that is Taqwa so Allah (ﷻ) is saying, this is the month where you can foster Taqwa Allah (ﷻ) talks about this month and he says that my mercy is open, so one time Ayesha رضي الله عنها she went to the Prophet ﷺ and she said, "Ya Rasulullah" she said, "If I were to witness the month of Ramadan and in particular, I was to witness Leila al Qadar" so then she said, "If I were to do this, ماذا أقول يا Rasulullah?" What should I say? there's so many different Dua's that I can make, but what is one Dua that I should prioritize? and so Rasulullah ﷺ said what is the Dua? yes very good I thought you said لا إله إلا الله, it's like, that's our Kalimah so Rasulullah ﷺ said repeat this Dua you know the beauty of this Dua, it's so beautiful you are recognizing that اللهم إنك عفو Oh Allah, you are the one who can pardon so you're going to Allah and you're complaining and you're not complaining to, for example, your Imam, your Sheikh imagine you tell your Sheikh, "Oh Sheikh, or Imam Sahab, I have done so many sins, so can you forgive me?" Imam Sahab will give you Tawbah on the head, you say, "Go ask Allah" right? so for example, like, you know, you're, you're going to your work and you want to complain about your work, right? somebody is not treating you right, will you go complain to the employee? will you go complain to your fellow, you know, person who's working in the cubicle next to you? no you're gonna complain to the HR office? not even the HR office, you're gonna go to the boss, you say, "Boss," because he's the one who can change it for example, if you're in a class and somebody is not treating you right, you're getting bullied who are you going to ask, who are you gonna complain to? you're not gonna complain to the sub-teacher, you're not gonna complain to the TA you're not gonna complain to the hall monitor you're not even gonna complain to the teacher, but you're going to go straight to the principal of the school and you're gonna say, "This person is bullying me" so when we are complaining to Allah, when we are asking forgiveness, we are saying Ya Allah, I recognize that you are the only one who can pardon me and then after that it's not just that you can pardon me, you love to forgive you love to forgive your servants who have continuously, continuously disobeyed your command who does that? which boss? okay? which boss will forgive you if you're late for your project? I was once, uh, there was a, I was looking at these Instagram reels it was a very funny reel that they were having, so basically in, I think it was in Taiwan or China or something there was a guy who was working in a warehouse that was manufacturing toilets, okay? and so in the warehouse, there was almost 200,000 toilets on top of, you know, these shelves so this guy, one of the workers, what he did was, he accidentally tipped over one toilet and that toilet fell on another toilet, and that toilet fell on another toilet domino effect, all 200,000 toilets were destroyed it was mentioned that almost $6 million were lost from that company okay, so if this guy were to go up to his boss and he was like, "Oh boss, please forgive me, let me have my job" you think he'll, he'll keep, he'll let him have his job? he's gonna kick him out not only will he kick him out, he will make sure that that guy never gets a job in any other place ask a person who has been bullied or harassed their entire life, ask them if they would love to forgive sometimes we have been wronged by other people and we forgive, we're like, جلو كيك, like, I forgive you but who is harassed and they love to forgive? my dear brothers and sisters, we have been harassing the commandments of Allah our entire life we have been disobeying Allah and then Allah still comes up and he says, "I love to forgive you" how beautiful is that? how beautiful is that? if we knew the extent of the mercy of Allah (ﷻ), we would be ashamed to disobey Him we literally would be ashamed one time my teacher, he was talking about how can we start crying to Allah? this is something that a lot of us struggle with, we have very hard hearts sometimes it's very hard for us, you know, in Ramadan, it's hard for us to sit and cry to Allah so he said, my teacher, and when I asked him this question, it's like, "Ustadi, how can I, how can I cry?" so he said, "I will tell you a personal anecdote" whenever, whenever I want to cry, it's hard for me to cry to think about how much I disobeyed Allah or how much Allah will punish me it's hard for me to cry but whenever I think about the fact that I have disobeyed Allah and Allah continues to love me when I have went against His commands and He continues to give me, that's when I start crying and so my dear brothers and sisters in Islam, Allah (ﷻ) says, "The month of Ramadan, I am ready to forgive you" "I am ready to love you, but you are the person who has to change" so now let's come to preparation if we want to tap into the blessings of Ramadan we will not be able to fully tap into the blessings of Ramadan and maximize this Ramadan if we are not preparing from now if you are working at a job and you have to present for your project how long will it take you to prepare for that? some people for projects, it will take six months, eight months, right? if you're preparing for an exam, how long do you take to prepare for that exam? couple months, couple weeks, right? I mean, if you're a student now, use ChatGPT, it'll take a couple days, at least you're preparing, right? if you ask a person who is about to perform a medical surgery, you ask the surgeon he won't just come in, Masha Allah, he was sleeping, he just comes and he performs a surgery no, him and the nurses, they will spend hours and hours and hours reviewing all of the surgical procedures making sure all of the instruments are the proper instruments making sure they are taking all of the x-rays, examining the person's body because if they just cut one wrong vein, the person will die if we are preparing for things in this world but when we are approaching Ramadan with the intention to, to change our lives and we think we don't want, we don't have to prepare for that, what is the foolishness in this? if Ayesha رضي الله عنها said in the month of Sha'ban, fasted in this month more than any other month except Ramadan she's saying that even the Prophet ﷺ is preparing for this month then imagine you and I preparing for the month of Ramadan is like turning off the switch of a fan if you turn off the switch, will the fan completely come to a stop? like, all of a sudden? no, it takes some time, takes some time, it will slowly stop preparing for Ramadan, preparing our hearts for Ramadan, is like turning off the fan we are trying to turn off the fan of our bad deeds if we expect to turn off this, 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 the switch in the beginning of Ramadan Wallahi, I will guarantee you that your fan of bad deeds will only stop the night before Eid and then your month is gone, like, "Ya, I, I should have taken advantage of this month" so if we want us to be spiritually prepared, we have to stop our bad habits from now then only the fan will come to a stop before the month of Ramadan how do we do that? we'll end off, Insha Allah, in two minutes and we're going to focus on five points, Insha Allah, five points to prepare your heart for the month of Ramadan number one, intention have the intention that this month of Ramadan is going to be the month that you change sometimes, Wallahi, my dear brothers and sisters, we feel like we're going to live a very long life right? sometimes we feel like, "Oh, if I don't prepare this, if I don't, you know, change my life this Ramadan, the next Ramadan is there" there was one of our friends who, um, he was talking, and this was two Ramadans ago a, a month before Ramadan, he was, he was living in Michigan Rahimahullah, he passed away so he was talking about how he is going to do this and he's going to do that in regards to his financial decisions and then we, and then we started talking about Ramadan, he was like, "Man, this Ramadan, I'm going to change my life" "I've been doing so many bad things and now I'm going to change and I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that" Allah took his life three hours before Ramadan started three hours before Ramadan started so sometimes we think, and that's why even like we're about, it's only 15 days left and we're still making this Dua "Oh Allah, let us witness Ramadan, please" right? so it starts with the intention, "Oh Allah, I'm not going to wait for another Ramadan" "I am going to make this Ramadan, the Ramadan that I change my life" number one, intention number two, fasting as much as we can Ayesha رضي الله عنها, as we said, Rasulullah ﷺ fasted in the month of Sha'ban more than any other month except Ramadan we have 15 days or 14 days now approximately, depends on Moon Siding Tuwun, that's gonna be a whole other course if we want to talk about Moon Siding 14, 15 days, we have 14, 15 days let's try to fast at least every Monday and Thursday if you can't fast Monday and Thursday, try to fast one day a week if you can't fast one day a week, try to fast at least once, once before the beginning of Ramadan any small step that you change, depending on how you are with Allah, it is, it is a step closer to preparation so number one, mindset, getting a good intention number two, fasting number three, Quran the month of Ramadan is the month of the Quran the Salaf, the pious predecessors of the past, they were asked if we are able to, if we want to utilize the month of Ramadan, we have so many different worships that we can do what is one worship, what is one Ibadah that we should be focusing on more? they all said, reading the, reading the Quran Imam Abu Hanifa rahimahullah, he used to read 61 Khatmas of the Quran in Ramadan he would read one from Fajr till Maghrib then from Maghrib to Esha, he would rest a little bit, from Esha till Tahjud, he would finish another Khatma 61 Khatmas Imam Ashafi rahimahullah would read 60 Khatmas of the Quran now, we can't do 60 Khatmas, sometimes we can't even finish one but if we want to really, you know, take advantage of Ramadan in reading the Quran, let's start from now and I've, in many Khatiras and Jumma Khatba's, I talked about how we can build a relationship with the Quran so number three is Quran number four is Tahjud Wallahi, you will see the people who prayed Tahjud, they have a different Noor on their face Wallahi, you will see they have a different Noor one time Hassan Basi rahimahullah, he was once asked by one of his, uh, one of his, uh, one of his students, he said "Oh my teacher, why is it that we see that the people who pray Tahjud, they have a light, they have a Noor on their face?" sometimes you have fair complexion people, but the fairness of Ibadah and worship is different it's a different glow, it's literally glowing, right? It doesn't matter the color of your skin so Hassan Basi rahimahullah, he said, that when a person prays Tahjud, this is the closest that he can be to Allah Allah is so pleased that He gives him light from His own light He gives him light from His own light and so the person has this glow Wallahi, if you, um, and this is also with our Salaah, I think I mentioned this once if, if one of our, when I was studying in Michigan, if one of our classmates didn't pray Fajr, the teacher would know so I had one classmate, Masha Allah, he was a very smart kid but the one thing that he would have trouble with is waking up for Fajr, so he wouldn't wake up for Fajr and he wouldn't pray Fajr he would pray later, you know, in Israa time or before he comes to class Wallahi, I'm telling you, this person wouldn't even sit down and the teacher would say, "Aj Tu, you didn't pray Namaz today, you didn't pray Fajr today" and the kid was like, "I didn't even tell you I didn't pray Fajr" and he was like, "I can recognize by the facial features" "I can tell by your face that you didn't pray Fajr today" and so Tahjud, try to pray Tahjud you know, the best way to, if, if, sometimes like even for me, Wallahi, I'll be honest with you, I don't trust myself waking up for Tahjud it's very hard, very, very hard, especially if you have a very tough day and you're doing work and you're doing this and you go to sleep at 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM anyway it's hard to wake up for Tahjud, the best way to start praying Tahjud is, before you go to sleep, pray at least two or four Rakaas before you go to sleep, pray at least two or four Rakaas Wallahi, if we can, before we go to sleep, be on our phones and scroll through Facebook, Instagram, Sheikh, Twitter and WhatsApp for 30 minutes then we can get up for 10 minutes, make some Wudhu and pray before we go to sleep so this is the best way to start praying Tahjud, pray right before you go to sleep and Insha Allah, make Dua, Allah will give you Hidayah Wa Waqah for Tahjud so four things so far, intention, fasting, Quran, Tahjud last one, and this is one of the most important, make a schedule make a schedule for Ramadan making a schedule for Ramadan comes into two ways, uh, two, two parts number one, charting your goals "Okay, I want to read this much Quran, I want to do this much Ibadah, I want to pray this much Taraweeh, I want to make this much Dua" you know, Wallahi, my teachers would tell me in regards to Dua, sometimes we make Dua, but we get like, there's so many things that we want that we're just like, "Ya Allah, just whatever's in my head, give it to me" right? Sometimes it's very hard to make Dua, think about all of these things, because we have so many things we want to ask Allah that we get overwhelmed my teachers used to tell me the best way to increase in your Dua is to time your Dua so if you're making Dua, time your Dua if it's 30 seconds, then make intention that, "Next time I make Dua, I'm going to make Dua for at least two minutes" and don't stop making Dua until you get the two minutes, then keep on increasing there will come a time where 30 minutes will have gone by and you're still making Dua to Allah (ﷻ) so Abay Tuwun, where did Dua come from? Yes, making a schedule number one, charting all of your goals "I want to do this much Quran, I want to do this much Dua, I want to do this much Ibadah" then look at your schedule and see how much worship you can fit into, into those timings there are a lot of timings where, like, there's going to be very, like, free, a lot of open spaces where we would have consumed those spaces outside of Ramadan, for example, lunch okay, you're not eating anything like, if you're eating something in lunch, then you have a different problem, okay? this is not the talk for you your lunch times, breakfast times, a lot of us don't, don't, we don't go to the gym anyway but if we go to the gym, we don't usually go to the gym during the day, we usually go after Taraweeh or something like that, after Fajr so you have your gym time, there are a lot of different times where we don't realize, we can really maximize those moments to increase in our Ibadah all right? so five things, number one, what is the first one? intention second one? fasting third one? Quran fourth one? what's the best way to start praying Tahjud? very good yes, praying before you go to sleep and last but not least, making a schedule scheduling is divided into two parts, what was the first part? goals, and then number two? yeah, filling in or looking at your schedule and filling Ibadah in those times where you are free this is how we can maximize the month of Ramadan if we just do these five things in these 15 days, Wallahi, brothers and sisters, it's going to be tough, but the month of Sha'ban has so much Barakah if we start, Insha Allah, and I'm talking to myself first, if we start, Insha Allah, and if we really maximize these 15 days Wallahi, this Ramadan will be like no other Ramadan you have witnessed in your life and you have to do it, Wallahi, you have to, Wallahi, you have to there's a very scary Hadith, Rasulullah ﷺ was Rasulullah صل الله عليه وسلم was climbing the Mimbar and he was about to speak. And there's three steps of the Mimbar. So Rasulullah صل الله عليه وسلم, this time, he said, Ameen, Ameen, Ameen. So the Sahabat, they were like, Ya Rasulullah, nobody said anything. You didn't say anything, why are you saying Ameen? And so Rasulullah صل الله عليه وسلم, he said, جبريل، اتاني جبريل. Jibreel عليه السلام came to me and he told me three things and he forced me to say Ameen. And one of those Dua's was, من ادرك رمضان ولم يغفر له. A person who witnesses the month of Ramadan and he doesn't maximize it in a way that Allah forgives him, Allah will enter him into hellfire. و ابعد الله عن. He won't just enter him into Jannaham, He will cast him far away into the depths of Jannaham. And Jibreel said, Say Ameen. And so I said. So Allah will open up the doors for you to change, but if you don't change, then Allah has given us a punishment. Allah is very balanced, He's very fair. So if we really want to maximize this month of Ramadan, let's start with these five things, Insha Allah. Focus these 15 days, Insha Allah, for all of us. And then Ramadan, Insha Allah, will be very, very different. And we, Insha Allah, we will be forgiven in this month and Insha Allah, we will be able to change our lives in this month. I ask Allah سبحانه و تعالى to make us from those who witnessed this month of Ramadan. I ask Allah سبحانه و تعالى to make us from those who prepare for this month of Ramadan and to make us from those who are forgiven in this month of Ramadan. And I ask Allah سبحانه و تعالى to make us from those who are not exempt from the mercy and the forgiveness of Allah سبحانه و تعالى in this Ramadan. Jazakallah خير for attending. We ask Allah سبحانه و تعالى to make this talk a source of benefit, a source of benefit for us and a source of us to practice and convey to those who are not here. Insha Allah, we will see you all. Fajr tomorrow, right? Insha Allah. Jazakallah خير. Salaam alaikum warahmatullah. Tahjud first, yes.